Start again in our, uh, our hearing. Uh, next, uh, department up is Department of Streets. Commissioner and whoever else lost the short straw and has to come up with you, please. Afternoon, sir. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good afternoon, Councilman President Clark and Councilman Greenlee. I am Donald D. Carlton, Streets Commissioner. Good afternoon, President Clark and President Greenlee and members of City Council. I am Donald D. Carlton, Commissioner of Streets Department. Joining me today are Carlton Williams, Deputy Commissioner of Sanitation, Michael Carroll, Deputy Commissioner of Transportation, and Christopher Newman, Deputy Commissioner of Administration. I am pleased to provide testimony on the Streets Department's fiscal year 2017 operating budget. The Streets Department looks forward to this upcoming fiscal year as we embark on a number of new strategic objectives and continue our exceptional standard of servicing, providing clean, green, and safe streets for the city of Philadelphia. To achieve our goals, we request a general fund appropriation of $125,560,192 and an all funds appropriation of $188,580,192 for fiscal year 2017. The Department delivers a number of services that are critical to maintaining public health and safety in our communities. These essential services include, but are not limited to, curbside trash and recycling collection for over 540,000 households, maintaining all traffic control devices, and street lighting, the construction and maintenance of 320 bridges, 2,225 miles of streets and roadway, also snow and ice removal. The Streets Department employees have done an outstanding job during recent years fulfilling our mission despite significant changes including an aging transportation infrastructure, a volatile recycling market, uncertainty in state and federal funding, and an aging vehicle fleet. This year alone, we continue to maintain our curbside recycling rate and tonnage at historically high levels. Our anti-litter and community engagement efforts, including Philly Spring Cleanup and Philadelphia More Beautiful, have yielded unprecedented volunteers and cleaned up and unprecedented cleanup projects citywide. And our special public events cleaning efforts were particularly highlighted during the Department's exceptional work as part of the Papal Visit and the Villanova Parade Cleanup. We also continue to embark on strides that we hope will create a safer and more efficient multimodal municipal transportation network for all users of the public right-of-way. Maintaining the momentum of the last several years, multiple and varied projects are underway to improve traffic safety, expand alternative transportation modes for bicyclists, pedestrians, and manage traffic throughout the city. Our state-of-the-art Traffic Operations Center opened this past fall, establishing a city's first centralized and integrated traffic control system, and we are continuing our ambitious plan to modernize the city-owned streets, alley lights, and also upgrade with energy-efficient LED lighting. This winter, the Streets Department employees, in partnership with those and other city departments and agencies, historically managed the historic blizzard of 2016. We dropped, we would drop nearly two feet of snow on the Philadelphia air during the mayor's third week in office. All primary streets and nearly 80 percent of all residential streets were cleared within 24 hours of the end of the storm. The government stayed open through the regular business hours on Friday, January 22nd, when the storm initially arrived. The government stayed open throughout the Business Day and was one of the, and was the first major city open for business on Monday. The Department has a number of critical strategic priorities planned for fiscal 2017. City streets and roadways must be repaved and maintained at an optimal life cycle interval in order to maintain the local street network in a state of good repair. The Department is therefore embarking on a long-term plan to significantly increase paving over the next several years. The Department is also engaged in a strategic approach to the city's overall safe and complete streets transportation network that includes significant infrastructure improvements and multimodal and comprehensive focus on traffic, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. The work performed directly reflects the mayor's vision of zero fatalities by implementing traffic calming and redesign measures to prevent speeding, provides greater refuge to vulnerable pedestrians and bicyclists, and focuses on the most dangerous parts of the city's transportation network. The use of LED lighting to enhance visibility and increase traffic safety and create a sense of overall public safety is a significant component of this overall effort. On the sanitation side, Streets is implementing a major recycling initiative targeting residential multifamily structures where recycling participation has traditionally been a challenge. The initiative will includes a citywide, will include a citywide outreach and have a particular focus on the lowest-performing recycling neighborhoods throughout the city. We believe this initiative will significantly increase recycling participation during the city's solid waste, excuse me, during this time when overall recycling market is stabilizing and as a result, we want to greatly reduce the amount of refuse in the city's solid waste stream. The Department also plans to conduct a feasibility study on organics as part of the recycling efforts and to expand the availability and use of larger capacity recycling bins with the intent of adding more recyclable material. Our Department has embarked and has a remarkable track record of consistently delivering exceptional levels of sanitation and transportation service. We will move forward towards the strategic objectives I have just outlined with the confidence derived from our accomplishments and history of outstanding service. We thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. The deputy staff and I are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me first say, I, I, most people I've talked to certainly agree with me. I think your Department did a great job in that snow removal. I mean, that was a, one of the biggest snowstorms I think we had, and the streets were cleared, I think, you know, very promptly, and the city was, as you said, the city was back running quicker than I thought it was going to be, and I think you all did a great job with that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, let me ask you, you talked about the Papal Visit. I guess that had some impact on overtime. We got the Democratic National Convention coming this summer, which I'm personally glad to see, but what, what kind of impact would that have on overtime costs?
Uh, the Papal Visit itself?
Uh, well, now, well, well, you can talk about the Papal Visit, but then I was thinking about, have you forecast what the DNC, the convention, will have?
Well, that, that's kind of hard to forecast originally because a lot of the, the plan hasn't come together exactly what the DNC wants, exactly what's expecting. A lot of information is still forthcoming.
Okay.
So it will be kind of hard to give an exact amount that's based on a service requested.
Okay. How about the Papal Visit? What, what was the overtime?
Uh, that was about $600,000.
$600,000, sorry. Was there any reimbursement on that, or was that just?
That was totally reimbursed, correct, Chris? Yes.
Pardon me, Sayken?
All of it was reimbursed.
All? All was reimbursed? Okay. All right. Sounds good. Um, just a couple of quick questions, and I know Councilman Dom has some questions. On street repair, uh, on resurfacing, um, and I know there's steps to this. You mill, then you cut around the utility boxes or whatever, and then you pave or resurface. We get a lot of calls about, it seems that it takes a fairly long time on some streets to do. We did some checking on other cities, and at least we're told, if we're being told the truth, that New York, Boston, you know, cities like that, it only takes a couple of weeks for the whole process. To be fair, I think I've seen it take, at least in my neighborhood, about six to eight weeks for the total. Have you looked at ways to try to quicken that pace a little bit? Because it, you know, it's sometimes difficult for cars to travel on those milled streets, obviously, yeah.
There's, it's actually a shared process with some of the milling, or the milling being done by private industry and the paving being done by city employees. I'll let my Deputy Commissioner of Transportation, Michael Carroll, talk to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, this is Michael Carroll. I'm the deputy for Transportation in the Philadelphia Department of Streets.
A little closer to Mike, if you could.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, uh, last year, we had some challenges with a couple of contractors in particular, given the means and methods that they were using in order to prepare the streets to be paved. Just to summarize, their strategy was to prepare a long stretch of street.
Right.
And to go back and take care of the little details without creating a street or block that was ready to pave until everything was done. So we've been in conversations with those contractors, and we've asked them to provide us a constant stream of blocks that are ready to pave this season, and so far, they've been agreeable, and we've seen that the amount that they're prepping for us so that we can come back and finish the paving and put the line striping is coming in the stream, you know, a steady stream of blocks so that we can keep up with it. Our goal is to get it done in 15 days from preparation until paving.
The whole process?
That's our goal.
Sounds good.
And thus far this year, our average is about seven or eight days, and this last period, we had a little bit of a bump with the weather, but we were still able, on average, to get it done in about 10 days. So we understand that there was an issue last year. We're doing everything we can now to make sure that that does not recur.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I said, we, that was something. And since it was in my neighborhood, I had a whole lot of people tell me. They knew where to find me. Um, just one more thing on, on, this is Council President's question. As far as utility ditches, fixing plumber's ditches, I guess, is the best way to say, what coordination is there with either the utilities or, say, a private plumber to know they've dug up the street? And, and how does that work, I guess, is the general way? Because sometimes that seems like they sit there for a little while, too, you know?
Yeah, so we, and we've had similar issues because of the volume of work that's going on. The situation's a little bit different from the plumbers and the utilities. The utilities work with the Streets Department, and typically, they're involved in doing a temporary restoration, in which case, we'll come back and do a permanent restoration when their work is complete. Similar with the plumbers as well. One of the things that we're trying to do in order to fix that situation as well as coordinating with the Water Department.
Right.
And so what they've agreed to do is to see if they can have inspectors out in the field to make sure that the connections are good, and those inspectors can also keep us informed to make sure that that temporary restoration is adequate when we need to come back, or if we need to come back and do, do more work or get after the plumbers.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, because they're, at least they're supposed to take out a permit with the Water Department, so if the Water Department and Streets Department communicate, maybe that can, can move things along. Again, is there a timeframe when you first get a complaint? I, I guess it depends on the, on the issue, how long it takes to fix a plumber's ditch?
Um, so, 3-1-1. Okay, so we try and get back within 45 days of when the permit's issued. Um, you know, we can respond to these things as they're coming in, as 3-1-1 calls as well, so sometimes the timeframe is a little bit tighter if it's something that's supposed to have been taken care of, and we need to go back from when the call comes in.
And is there any priority given as far as being a bus route or a major street, or is it? Because I know oftentimes when it's, when it's a, a large ditch, a bus has to be rerouted, and people are trying to figure out where to catch the bus and all that's, is, is that, is there any priority, or is it kind of first come, first served?
Well, we're, we're trying to keep that standard consistent throughout the city, but of course, if there's a bus route, it's likely that we're getting more complaints, so it will come to our attention a little bit faster.
Okay. Not that I don't want the small streets filled, since I live on one, but, uh, I, pardon me?
One thing also, Councilman, if there's a safety issue, and we can visibly see that there's a safety issue, we're going to try and address that as soon as possible.
Okay. Gotcha.
And I should also add to that. I mean, there are standards of restoration which are temporary, and then there's the permanent ones, so we always try to make sure that it's made safe as quickly as possible, like the Commissioner said.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Chairman Greenlee. Thanks. Uh, good afternoon. I have four or five quick questions, just so, I want to clarify. On the, uh, in your testimony, page three, you talk about the employment levels. You currently have 129 open positions?
Uh, yes. Within the Streets Department, there's an actual ebb and flow of hiring, especially in sanitation. Our staffing level is based on trash tonnages, and during the summer and spring months, trash tonnages are higher. That's when we staff up, but as the tonnage drops in the winter and the fall, our staffing level decreases. We have a attrition rate of about 8 percent, I would say. So it's not us laying employees off and hiring, just that other entities seem to, seem to hire from our pool. So we actually have a hiring stream throughout the year where we staff up in the summer, and we attrit in the winter, then staff up back in the summer. So that's consistent with the amount of tonnage that's on the ground.
Okay. And the second question is, do you have an idea? I'm looking at your employee compensation in the middle of page three, and in 2015, it was 80, roughly 80.4 million dollars, and we're projecting in 17 to be 72.7, down about $8 million. Any reasons why that would be down?
Chris Newman, Deputy Commissioner for Administration. Most of that was overtime associated with the compactor shortage and also with regard to snow events during that year. So that, so that would be overtime associated with other endeavors that the Streets Department was engaged in. Did you say 2015?
2015, it was 8 million higher than what you projected.
That, so that, that would be the, that would be snow events for that year.
Okay. And in ballpark, what do you think the overtime costs are this past year?
We're going to probably get to about 14 million.
How much?
14 million by the end of the year.
14 million?
That's what we project, yes.
And?
By the end, by the end of this, by the end of this fiscal year.
So that's 20 percent of your payroll is overtime. That's a big number.
Yes.
When, I mean, overtime is either time and a half or double time on Sundays, I guess, right?
Correct.
So we could at least probably save $5 or $6 million of that if we had it staffed without overtime, I guess, right?
Well, in, in most cases, overtime is actually cheaper than staff, right? So if you're, and it depends on what the overtime is for. So in our case this year, most of that overtime was associated with snow cost as well as our compactor shortage.
But do you buy new equipment this year? I think you're buying new equipment for the compactor problem, correct? So we shouldn't have that issue this year?
We shouldn't have that issue, Councilman. And also, when you're looking at the staffing shortages, one thing we try to do to compensate for the overtime is keep our staffing levels at a certain level. If I don't have the compactors to put them on the street, we weren't going to do the hiring. So you'll see higher overtime and less staff because we simply didn't have the compactors or trucks to collect the trash. So that's why you see high overtime and you see a very low staffing number.
Okay. And the LED bulbs that you guys are putting in, I noticed you're doing that. What was the cost of that was probably before by time, and what was the payback? And is that something that's strictly done in an overtime mode?
Uh, the cost of the labor, you mean?
In other words, the investment in LEDs, what was the payback? Was it two years, five years? What was the payback period?
Uh, no, it's a little bit longer than that. I'd have to get back with you with a precise number.
Right.
But, you know, it's more on like a five to 10-year timeframe. It depends on the LED bulb. Uh, I assume you mean in terms of energy savings.
Yeah, in other words, we invest, I think it's great. We invest in LEDs. What was our total upfront cost? What's our payback period? Can you give me that information after this?
I can, and I, just so you know, it's going to be variable because there's a few factors to, to include in this. We have different wattages of LED, just like we do other, other kinds of bulbs. We have the opportunity to increase the, the light, the amount of light with LED, and there have been requests in some places to do that, which has benefits in terms of security and safety, but it does sort of degrade a little bit the energy savings. Also, in some of the LED projects, we're actually adding more light in terms of pedestrian-scale lighting for, you know, the aesthetic effect, and also to support some of the businesses and things like that. But I can have that all broken down and get back to you with that.
Is that a program that's done on the weekends versus during the week?
There have been some projects which we have done the work during the night and the weekends. Some of the LED replacements are done in the course of regular maintenance, so since we're going out and we're changing bulbs on a certain block, when we get to a certain threshold of bulbs that need to be replaced, we'll just do the whole block in LED in the course of the maintenance we would be doing otherwise.
Okay. One last question. In page three, I just don't understand what this is. It's M slash W slash D B E, and I'm asking the question because in fiscal year 16, it was down to 14 million, and in fiscal year 15, it was 22 million, and in '14, it was 23 million. Any reason why, what that is and why it went down? Which is good. I'm just curious what it is. Page three of your testimony, budget. Total amount to M slash W slash D B E.
Yes, yeah. So that would be the, the amount of payments to contractors that were M W D B E participants at that time.
Is that minority contractors?
Yes. Minority.
So why did that go down so much?
Are you talking about for this year?
In '16, yeah. Look at it, dropped $8 million from '15.
That is representing where we're at for the first two quarters of the year, and the other years are the entire fiscal year.
Okay, so that's not a full year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Squillaw.
Mr. Chair, good afternoon, guys, and thank you for being here. I do want to say before I start, I really appreciate the, the ability of the Streets Department to reach out to us and our staff. We get a ton of calls and requests, and I know through 3-1-1 in our offices, and I have to say Streets is very receptive and responsive, so thank you very much. We don't say that about all the departments, so we appreciate what you do. And my, I have just a couple of questions. One is lighting. Are we increasing the budget to do more of the change over to LEDs, or how are we going through that process? And how can we get that done in areas that really request it?
Over, over a five-year period, we are seeking some increases in the budget. We have not had an increase in budget this time, but we are pursuing grants, and that's been the main thing that we've been able to do, is to find grants that are funding different types of multimodal projects and to use the, some of that funding to pay for LED improvements.
And, and you know, as we install more and more of the LED lights, we do have, some people love the brightness and some people don't like the brightness, and there's, I guess there's different colors of, maybe a yellow LED or a dimmer LED compared to a brighter one. Is that, who weighs that decision? And if we do put a, a certain light up there that is not received well by the community, is there a way to easily change that, or no?
Well, one of the things that we really want to take into consideration with the color of the light, or what we call the temperature of the light, is the ability for police cameras to be able to differentiate between different colors at nighttime. And so the color that we're trying to, the temperature of the color, or kind of the color that we're trying to hit, is ideal for them to be able to pick out and distinguish different colors accurately as if it was daytime with the police cameras that are out there. So that, that's been a major concern. We do have the opportunity to work with different communities, though, to figure out how the, the spread of the light is directed, and sometimes some of the issues that people have with glare or the brightness, it has to do with the way that the light is sort of directed off the sidewalk or maybe directed onto the buildings. We've had issues where people felt like they had to go get new blinds or curtains because it was just shining into their house. But we can adjust that, and it makes a big improvement for people.
Um, we just recently had a, a hearing with Verizon, and they have commented that it seems like lately has been very good permitting, helping permitting for them to, I guess, finish out their build-out. They, they, I think they had said they were requesting 72 permits and weren't receiving them. Is that something that we could work with them to, to get them done? And I guess we can't open all the streets all at the same time, where every street would, might be, all be blocked, but is that something that we could do to enhance their ability to build out more?
Well, um, you know, Verizon has made some changes this year, which has made it a lot easier for us to get the information from them that we need to get from them in order to issue their permits. And so we're encouraged by the changes that Verizon made and the higher level of engagement that they've had in the, in the process that we've had in place in order to issue the permits.
Oh, that's good. That's good to hear. I mean, and we were also willing to help them to continue that, and we have to work together, obviously, to make these things happen, and plus, we're also understanding the, the neighbors and the people in the streets that are being dug up, and if we have five streets in one area dug up at the same time, it could really cause a big hardship. Couple other questions. On the, we just did, Councilman Johnson introduced a resolution about, um, open streets type, um, program, or I guess special event that is done in other areas, and I know they're looking to do one in, in Philadelphia. Is that going to be under the purview of streets, obviously, but is it going to be under the new complete streets, or is it going to be under, how's that going to work? Who's, who's going to be in charge of that?
Well, initially, right now, it's just the one event planned in October. I think this will be more of a conversation that we'll have to take up, take up with the Office of Transportation Infrastructure of how it's going to be organized moving forward, but we do have the one planned, uh, open streets in October, and I guess, taking that and then building from that event, it'll be something that we have to talk to the Office of Transportation Infrastructure about, on how we'll handle that moving forward.
Yeah, it seems like it's a pretty neat idea, and, you know, I'm curious to see, it's going to affect a lot of people, so hopefully the businesses and the communities are involved in the process, and, you know, maybe we can learn from it as the first one rolls out and decide how to do it again in the future. We're also talking, obviously, you hear the conversation always about bike lanes and, and things that go on throughout the district. Is there more money that's going to be put in? I know there's so many streets that get done each year. Is that something also that goes into the formulas for how many, I guess, redoing streets and bike lanes would be added to that at the same time?
Uh, we always try and integrate all forms of multimodal. When you're thinking about resurfacing a street, resurfacing a street, we're thinking about bike lanes. We're also thinking about what other safety impacts we can take from a traffic calming measure. And as of right now, we plan on 17 more miles of additional bike lane in this upcoming year, and as we resurface, we do try and evaluate where bike lanes would be most beneficial. But I also, Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner?
Yeah, that, I, I think what the Commissioner is saying is right. I should add to that, that, you know, we're looking at a, at a longer-term goal, and as we were saying with the LED improvements, we're looking for grant opportunities in order to accomplish that. News broke, I'm hopeful that we can get the money in from DVRPC for the Transportation Alternatives Program, or what we call the TAP program. That money will be available to us later in the year, so we'll do some outreach with different communities and figure out what the best mix of things is that we put in the street. I think we'll really start ramping up, you know, towards the end of this year and in the spring.
Okay, great. And I know my time's up, but I have one last question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Since you're Chair of the Streets and Services, maybe we won't let you go.
I'll come back after my colleague has her questions, but the, we get a lot of complaints, and, I mean, the recycling program is great in the city. I mean, it, it seems like everybody's really used to it now, understanding, you know, the process, and, you know, the single stream aspect of it really works well to get people to, to do it. But on windy days and days where we have some really bad weather, sometimes it adds to some of the litter throughout the, the city. Is it possible for us to come up with some type of feature, or some type of lid, or something that we could do on our recycling days or recycling bins? And I know when we do, then the lids break, and, but there's got to be some way to try to keep some of this trash in the bins before they get picked up, because they seem to blame sanitation when it's mostly the weather that's actually causing the problem.
Yes, we do understand that without a lid, there can be litter conditions created. The issue with that is you get into the bin replacement business, as, as we talked about before, where we're giving lids, excuse me, lid replacement business, where we're giving lids out and individuals aren't maintaining their lids. But we're also looking at larger bins. We're looking at trying to somehow either put an RFP together or find some kind of revenue where we're able to give bins out with lids. This is something that we've talked about and discussed in the preliminary stages. We did do an evaluation of how it would help the recycling stream if we had larger bins. So the carts are something that we're looking at. Unfortunately, we do not have the money on hand to purchase them, but if there's an opportunity where we can do an RFP or something of that nature, we're in early stages of considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bass.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
How are you?
Good, good, good.
How's everybody doing today?
Everybody.
Um, I just wanted to first start out by saying, I want to give you a big thank you, because, particularly to sanitation, because I know how hard the job is. I see your folks, your guys and your girls, uh, out morning, noon, and night. I see them in, on the weekend throughout my district, and, you know, but the fact of the matter is, we have a real, real trash dumping problem and situation in the city of Philadelphia. And no matter how hard they work, or how much they're And no matter how hard they work, or how much they're doing to try to get the city cleaned up, you know, and you and I know, there's a couple of sites, in particular in my district, where I'll call you, you'll send your people right out, they'll handle it, and within a day or two, someone else has dumped again, and it just goes on and on and on. And so, I think that dumping is one of the most significant problems that we have in the city of Philadelphia. Of course, it doesn't rate with like crime and education and those sorts of things. But there is a relationship, I think, between communities where you have higher crime rates and communities where you have lower educational attainment, and almost like the acceptance, if you will, that it's okay to dump in this neighborhood, particularly by dumpers who are coming from other areas. You know, they're coming, they're bringing construction waste. We don't know what's in that concrete and that construction waste, and so now it becomes an environmental issue. And so, I say all of that to say that I'm greatly concerned about the dumping and trash, and, you know, how do we get ahead of this? And I do think that it has to be, you know, more of a priority. Not that it's not a priority, you have a lot of priorities. But how do we tackle this problem?
This problem is a multi-agency problem. When you look, when you're talking about the contractors itself, you talk about the illegal dumping, and you're talking about the cleanup process, that's a police, LNI, and Streets Department issue. It's something that we have to work together to try and get ahead of. As you know, we approach it from an enforcement standpoint, we approach it from a service standpoint, as you know. But we also have 20, we have 20 cameras that we actually rotate throughout the city. I was about to say where, but we actually don't let individuals know where they are.
Good.
And for, we try and do it on three-month rotation, where we have these solar-powered cameras in certain places throughout the city. So far, we've been able to identify approximately 175 illegal dumpers. We do turn it over to Neighborhood Services for prosecution. So, we are pursuing it from an enforcement standpoint, we are pursuing it from a service standpoint, but the illegal behavior is just a criminal activity that we haven't been able to get our hands on. When you have road contractors without licenses, you have contractors that simply don't care, that's something that, it's just, it's an enormous task to put a rope around these particular individuals. So, we're trying to find it from every aspect, but again, we haven't found a solution, but it's not something that we're not focusing on.
Right. No, I'm not saying that you're not focusing on it, but I just, you know, it becomes frustrating. And I know that you're frustrated with it as well, and Commissioner Williams has been, you know, at this for a long time. And I know that, you know, we all feel a level of frustration with the dumping and the trash, and trying to figure out, how do we address it in our neighborhoods? And it's not in every neighborhood. You know, there's certain neighborhoods you can go to. So, for example, I represent from Chestnut Hill to Broad and Lehigh. And as you know, it's a huge amount of land in between those two locations, and you just don't see dumping in Chestnut Hill. And that's a wonderful thing. But just like it's unacceptable to not happen in Chestnut Hill, it shouldn't be acceptable or, you know, it just shouldn't be happening down in the North Philadelphia, Germantown, Nice Town, Logan, Alany. It's not acceptable anywhere. And so, just changing that mindset is just really, really, you know, it's been a source of frustration. No matter how many Philly cleanup days we do, no matter how many Comcast Cares days, you know, this is a problem that's significant, and just trying to get in front of it is a bit of an issue, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Carlton Williams, Deputy Commissioner for the Streets Department. I concur, as obviously something that's unacceptable, and we have to have a focused effort. Commissioner Carlton, last year, launched a new campaign called Pick It Up Philly, which is to remind residents how to report these issues when they come up. The best way to combat it is to try to prevent it from happening in the first place. If we see contractors without permits, for example, that should be reported to the department, ultimately, those hotspots, we try to rotate those cameras around the city of Philadelphia, not publicly announcing it, but we want to make sure that we address it. But I want to concur with the things that you said, without stricter enforcement, it's going to be very, very difficult to try to curb that behavior. So, we're looking forward to working with your office to try to come up with stronger enforcement strategies to prevent these things from happening in the first place.
Oh, great, because I have some ideas.
Very good. Thank you.
So, I'll be in touch. On another matter, I just wanted to check in with you. Last year, we introduced a bill, I introduced a bill that was scheduled to raise about $3.4 million through increases in, slight increases in vehicle registration fees, very slight increase. And so, those monies were to be spent on safety initiatives with the Streets Department, speed bumps, you know, things of that nature, street repaving, pedestrian safety matters. So, I just wanted to see, can you give us an idea of how much has been received so far, and how that's going?
I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank you for your hard work on that legislation, and...
We had a great Legislative Assistant, Kami, or was his name?
You guys did a great job. Thank you. Well, as of right now, we have not received any funds, but June of 2016 will be the first installment, and only be a partial. We'll receive $190,000 this June, but June of 2017, we should receive the $3.4 million moving forward. But again, these funds are all going towards road resurfacing and safety issues along our roadways. So, that's all the money is dedicated to. But again, the initial $3.4 will not be here until next June. This June, we're expecting $190,000 because of the, when the actual fee went in place.
Okay.
Want to add something?
No, that sums it all up.
And that's including speed bumps, too?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll come back after, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. How can I thank you for all that you do when we call you every day? I was late coming because I was checking on some pot odds. And in fact, we appreciate the work being done, because I don't think we caught up last year. And I don't know, I don't think it was you all, obviously, because you always take care of us. But I don't know what the administration's rules were. Now, we're getting calls again about people who are asking for trash cans again. I know the rule, the rule used to be, if you put in more trash cans, then somebody has to take out the bags on trash day. I don't know what the, how you all see it this year, and I wanted to ask you that.
Are we actually, excuse me. You're talking about the wire baskets, right, Councilwoman? Are you talking about the wire baskets?
Say that.
Are you talking about the wire baskets?
Yes.
We do have the Adopt a Basket Program, which goes through Philadelphia Beautiful Committee, where they can request a basket, and the individuals do service it. But one issue that we do experience in a lot of neighborhoods is just illegal dumping. Individuals think that this wire basket is their personal trash can, and where they know that it's being serviced, and they tend to bring their household trash around these wire baskets on a regular basis. So, we still encourage the Adopt a Basket Program, but we are very particular as to when we put a basket up and where we put it up, because in many cases, residents are calling us to come get them. You know, we ask you for the basket, two months later, look, come get it, come get it. And that's just the issue. People, when you have an issue, especially on some business quarters, where you have apartments with overcrowding, you have apartments with no storage, I mean, people know that that truck is coming every day. So, instead of keeping it in an apartment, or keeping it somewhere where it may attract rodents, they tend to take advantage of the wire baskets. And we're ended up having to service these baskets, not just for the basket itself, but the materials just dumped all around it. I have a photo album, Councilwoman, about this thick. And the worst one I saw was someone had a toilet next to the wire basket, and then individuals started putting trash inside the toilet. So, the toilet became, in a distal trash can, next to the wire basket. So, it's, we just have to really be strategic about where we place them, and if it's really benefiting the neighborhood.
Thank you. So, that might work out in some areas.
Yes, yes.
And you'll, you will dump them when you dump others.
Yes.
When you put, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just quickly, I want to say, I certainly understand what you're saying, Commissioner, because there was some put up in my area, and I quickly got calls saying, please get this thing out of here. People dumping garbage, dog feces, everything else. So, it's a, it's a plus and minus, I guess is the best way to say it.
It all depends. I mean, some places, they work wonders, and other places, they just don't make a difference. And it's really kind of hard to gauge until you see it for itself.
Sure, so it happens, sure. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to each of you. I just walked in from a meeting, so I don't know if this was said earlier, but I wanted to commend you all for the job you did with the snow. It was tough. You all were on it. Every street, as we got calls, we called you, and as soon as we called you, you got it on the list, and it was done decently and in order. And if it wasn't, I would be on the record saying it wasn't, so it was, and I needed to give credit where credit is due, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Um, listen, the first question for me, and I don't know if it came up, is this issue of the larger-capacity recycle bins. And we've seen them piloted in other neighborhoods. And then they call, you know, our office, they go visit the district office and say, we want those, we need those. You know, what's happening with the pilot? Has it ended? Can we expand it? What's the status?
Well, as of right now, we did the pilot in one neighborhood in the Northeast and one neighborhood in the Northwest, and we did not have planned extending the pilot because we got great results from the pilot. Now, we're just trying to find, how do we get the revenue to increase this to other neighborhoods? These containers, if we were to go citywide, would be about $30 million if we bought one for every house. So, that's, that's an issue in itself. But we're in the early stages of talking about putting an RFP together to try and see if we can do something to make these cans interesting to someone else, where they can end up purchasing them before, purchasing them before the city of Philadelphia.
Was it, was it a cost savings to us also, from an environmental perspective? And to when we, when we saw the increased recyclable bins, did we see people recycling more?
We had about a 30% increase on the two pilot routes.
Okay, so it was a 30% increase. So, not only does it make good in environmental sense for us, in economic sense from that matter, but we know it can, the investment is worth tax spared dollars, it makes sense. $30 million?
Well, these cans are about $40 apiece, and when you're talking about the number of households throughout the city, and then there's some other issues with constructing the can and delivery, around $30 million.
Okay. Well, I would be very interested in seeing how the department sort of unveils, enrolls a plan, or any kind of strategy you can come up with, where we can work to make that the standard operating procedure for the city of Philadelphia. It worked, and now when you have something that works, and you have to go back to people and tell them, I know you saw it and you want it, but you, you know, you can't have it, you know, that's something we would like to do.
I understood, and that's something that we definitely want to pursue moving forward. We're just trying to figure out a way how we can fiscally do that.
Let me, the old trash cans that are replaced by the Big Belly trash cans, are they in storage somewhere? Like, we've had some old trash cans, and they were replaced by Big Belly trash bins. Where are they now?
Well, a lot of those wire baskets were not in great condition, but many of them we use for special events. When you see baskets lined along the Parkway, or baskets lined along Broad Street, a lot of those baskets are used during the special events.
So, and I heard you, Commissioner, you know, mention sort of the woes associated with the wire bins, because you're right, I have seen in some regions where they are used, and they become a magnet for short dumping. But then on some quarters, like on Wadsworth Avenue, and on Vernon Road, and on Rising Sun Avenue, and then on Old York Road, they can become an asset for us. So, what, if we are working in conjunction with your department, particularly for those that, where we, you have them in storage, maybe we could work on a quarter-by-quarter basis to conduct some sort of assessment with the expertise of your department, to see whether or not, on a trial basis, we could put some of them back to work?
We're definitely willing to work with you. But one thing to keep in mind, though, Councilwoman, is these baskets require extra service. So, the more baskets I put up, that's actually additional staff needing to service these baskets. Some of these baskets need to be serviced up to three times a day. The Big Bellies actually saved us approximately a million dollars in Center City, when we went from the 17 collection a day to now about four a week. So, expanding our wire basket network, which right now, we have over 1,000 Big Bellies, and we have over 600 wire baskets throughout the city, expanding that on a massive level will require additional staff to service these baskets, because they're not on the same day as collection day throughout the week. So, the crew that exists won't be able to service those baskets, will have to be some other kind of infusion to ensure that these baskets are serviced timely.
So, I wouldn't suggest sort of an additional investment. I'm just talking about what we have in stock and in storage now, right, that we've taken off the street because it's been replaced by Big Belly, because I'm a Big Belly advocate, right? But I don't think we have enough Big Bellies for every commercial quarter in the city of Philadelphia, right? So, where we don't have enough, if it's possible that we could get the Commerce Department, Streets, in particularly if it's any kind of community development corporation, or in many instances, it may not be, but there is a business association, if we could just sit down and sort of talk about a strategy quarter-by-quarter, that would be extremely helpful.
That sounds good.
Final question, and help me here, so they'll know I asked this for the record. This, the issue of speed bumps. Now, I traveled through, and I used to represent the 200th Legislative District, which is the 9th Ward, the 22nd Ward, and the 50th Ward. And I would get people in the 50th Ward who would say to me, now, in the 50th Ward, just so you know, it's the area where when people bought their home, they were buying in Mount Airy. So, it was Mount Airy, it was East Mount Airy, and then it was West Mount Airy. But when there's a chute, and it's called Cedar Brook, just want you to be clear about the region I'm talking about. And in addition to that, what they will say is, if I am traveling to take my son to school and in preschool, you can drive up a block that has a speed bump, right? It has a speed bump. And then I'll have someone from another region who'll say to me, well, why can't we have a speed bump at this location? And we will say, speed bumps are illegal in the city of Philadelphia. You can't put a speed bump or get a speed bump on this block. Is there a certain criteria? Or, and have you, I can't be the only one who's seen speed bumps in some neighborhoods and not in others. Is there a criteria? Is it illegal? What's the, what's the state of it?
I'm going to turn this over to my Deputy Commissioner of Transportation, Mr. Michael Carroll.
Hi, yes. So, just to start, we don't use speed bumps on the street. You probably don't see them anywhere but shopping centers. The speed bumps are the narrow ones that are real high. So, the term we use is either speed hump, which we really don't use anymore, or speed...
Did you call, now say that again, wait. Speed bumps are in, wait, now, you got to help me.
Yeah, all right.
And, Mr. Chairman, please grant me some latitude here, because I want to get the, get the jargon.
This is important, I think. Go ahead.
Bumps are, bumps are in the commercial?
Yeah, they're real narrow, maybe one foot wide, and then tall. So, when you hit them, you go up real sharp, and then you come down, and you...
So, that's a bump. Now, what's on the street?
In some cities, you'll find what they call speed humps.
Humps.
Which are about maybe four, five, six feet wide, okay? And then they're about the same height, so it's a little more gradual. So, if you're going about 25, 30 miles per hour, you won't feel quite so badly. In Philadelphia, what we decided to do is use what we call speed cushions.
Speed cushions.
So, they're like the little pillow shapes that you see in the street that have the gap in between them, so that the fire department, police department, ambulance can aim their tires for those gaps, and they won't get that bump effect, that undulation in the vehicle, and they can proceed on their way at a little bit higher speed. So, speed cushions are not illegal in the city of Philadelphia. It's the, it's a traffic calming measure that we prefer to use when we're trying to slow down traffic on local streets. We can work with PennDOT, but PennDOT is a lot more resistant to putting them on the arterial streets, and especially the state routes that they have control over. The process for getting traffic calming on a block is on the Streets Department website, and we have a little FAQ and a lot of information on the website for people. Typically, what we're doing is, we're either working with the council people to identify the locations where these should go in, or we're asking the residents to do a petition, and they get back to us with about, I think we have about 75% of the folks on a given block, that we want to agree to get them in place. The thing people need to know about the speed cushions is that, you know, there's pros and cons to them. Some people feel like having them in their neighborhood, or having them in front of their house, is a detriment to them, because for heavier vehicles, there can be a noise associated with them. And some people just don't like them. They don't want them on their block. They feel like the traffic in a given situation is fine the way it is, and they think it's an intrusion to have them on their streets.
So, Deputy Commissioner, you just gave us a good answer, and, Mr. Chairman, I think we've been asking the wrong question. So, there are bumps, and humps, and cushions?
Cushions, yeah.
Okay, all right. And so, my people have been asking for the wrong thing. So, one, we'll make sure we let them know that. And quickly, is there a timeline for the, how long does it take to apply for the cushion, get the app looked at? How long should I tell them, if I'm at a meeting, and I'm sharing this information?
We have to go out and do a little research, and we try and turn that around in about a month or so, maybe six weeks on the outside.
Mr. Chairman and colleagues, thank you so very much for the latitude.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Important question. And just on that, I assume you mentioned noise. I would assume on a small street, that can be a little bit annoying, right?
It can be, it can be, and there are some...
So, I think people need to know that part of it, yeah, yeah. Just, let me jump in here with a quick question, if I could. On, in your Class 285, you talk about proposed decrease for this year in what's called rents. Could you tell me why there was a spike last year? And if I'm right, I think snow removal is categorized as rents, and I'm trying to figure that one out.
That rent actually corresponds to our snow contracts for our snow disposal and plowing operations that are contracted out. And we paid about eight million dollars, a little over eight million dollars this year. We were budgeted for five point two. So, that amount you're seeing is what we are getting this year that we're not going to be getting next year. Next year, we'll be budgeted at five point two million dollars again.
And you're not getting it next year, cause, why? Just to make it clear.
We typically wouldn't need it.
Oh, you wouldn't need it?
So, that five point...
You're being, you're being hurtful. Have you checked on any of the meteorologists on this, or...
So, that average goes on a five-year average, in terms of the amount of actual money we spend, and we budget out. So, that five point two million corresponds to a five-year average of how much we spend for our snow contracts.
So, what are you renting, though? Just so I'm clear. When you say rent, what are you renting?
Vehicles and equipment for plowing operations and disposal operations.
Okay.
We actually have contractors that do that work for us.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you very much.
One thing to make note of, Councilman, is when we talk about this last storm that we had...
Yeah.
When you look at the cost of what we actually expect to spend, and what we did spend, when you look at the storm of, the blizzard of 2016, the plowing operation became a lifting operation. So, you had to have more equipment that was actually lifting the snow out of these city streets, more so than just plowing. So, there was a higher need for various type of equipment to clear the streets, which you wouldn't have with a normal eight-to-ten inch storm.
I got you, yeah. So, it was more, more to do, I got you, okay. Uh, Count, thank you. Councilman Don.
Thank you, Chairman Greenlee. Just two last questions, quick ones. In 2013, I want to go back to the overtime. Our overtime was eleven million. In 2015, it was sixteen million, and projecting for 2017, seventeen million, which is a fifty-seven percent increase. Can you explain why it's increasing at this level?
Well, the one thing I can talk about on my end, I'll pass it on to Chris, is, again, the compactor issue got increasingly worse as the years went on. We, at our worst, we were short forty compactors. And just to give you an example, a compactor services up to a thousand households per day. So, if I'm short forty compactors, that's forty thousand houses that I have to pick up on overtime. So, that's what caused the spike, the overtime over the last few years, having to pick up forty thousand houses on average through some periods on overtime every day. And simply, if we had those forty compactors, the trash would have been up on regular time, at least ninety-six percent of it, which is our normal on-time rate, ninety-six percent, when we have our full complement of trash compactors.
But I would ask you this question, then. Why did it take us four or five years to get the compactors, if we're spending all this extra money on overtime?
Well, again, we, our department, we don't purchase compactors. We understand what we need, we have an agreement with what we need.
I understand.
But that, we have not had the ability to purchase compactors in the past. But moving forward, we do have a line item in our capital budget, where we should have a replacement of thirty-five compactors per year, which should get us in a state of good repair. How many years, Chris? In eight years.
Right. Who do you go to when you need equipment like that? Who's responsible for that?
Who purchases our equipment?
If you wanted, in 2013, or to fourteen, is when we had the big jump, over four million dollars in overtime, and it's probably because of the compactors. Who could you, who decides whether or not we get the compactors at that point?
Again, we talked to Fleet about what our needs are, and whatever their budget is, I don't know who they speak with, but we are in constant conversation with Fleet about what we need, and they understand what we need. And I don't know what line items they may have or not have, so I couldn't say.
I'm just trying to figure out why it took us four or five years to figure out we needed more compactors.
It didn't take us that long.
But that's what it took, from the increases, it took four years?
Well, when we're looking at what we saw, what we needed, and what's in the budget, we, in advance, know what we need on the street. So, in turn, when we get the compactors, is when we're able to utilize them. That process in between of us saying what we need and when it delivered, is something that's beyond our control.
Okay. One other question. Other cities, Atlanta is one of them, are using, and so are a lot of our buildings in Philadelphia, by the way, they're using the rooftops, water towers, the tops of lighting poles in municipalities, for cellular companies to gain revenue from municipalities. And I think, I was informed that you guys, the Streets Department issued an RFI to wireless companies, to explore leasing some of our street fixtures. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And do you have any idea, I think it's a great idea, and I applaud you for it?
Thank you.
And do you have any idea what the potential revenue might be for that?
We haven't worked that out yet, but we expect, when we get the responses to the RFI, we should be able to come up with some figures.
And do you have somebody on staff, or somebody, a consultant who's an expert in this area, who can help us?
Well, we have, you know, we have the expertise with respect to other fees, but we don't necessarily have expertise for, you know, cellular data in particular. But within the RFI, what we are going to ask people is whether they have expertise, and so we may put out an RFP at some point to contract with someone to help us figure this out.
I have somebody, if you need help, who'd do it for free to help the city, who's an expert in this area. So, if you need help with this, just call me, I'll be happy to offer that, do it for free, just to help the city, so just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Squillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that our bike share program has been very, very positive for the use of bikes in the city, and I know we're expanding that. Is there additional resources being put into the budget to expand bike share? Is that coming through grants, or is that coming through the regular city budget?
The bike share program is run through the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Services. I'm sorry, the bike share program is run through the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Services. Streets Department plays a role in advising them about the siting of the stations, and also, we're involved in prying extra bike lanes and facilities to serve the stations. They might be better to answer those questions, but I do know that the idea is that bike share is more or less self-sustaining, so that as the system expands, the operator who has an agreement with the city is able to pay for the cost of keeping it up and running.
Okay. And I know that this administration has a big interest in a lot of construction that's going on within the city, so, I mean, the permitting of sidewalk closures and street closures is being looked at, and is, do we see that as becoming, since all the development that is happening, a bigger issue within the Streets Department? And should we look to increase the resources to that department to be able to keep up the speed with the amount of permits that are being issued, and I guess the amount of, I guess, work as far as checking on those, and make sure that they're done properly?
This fiscal year, we do have additional bodies being added to our right-of-way unit. We currently have three additional bodies. Again, with the building boom in the city, and ensuring that we do, that the permits are properly applied for, it's going to take an effort from the Streets Department, and not just the right-of-way unit, but the Streets Department as a whole. I have a...
Yeah, I would just add to that, that we're also looking at some technology that we can use, some technological solutions in terms of software. We've just recently upgraded our conflict management software, which we work with the utilities and others, in order to make sure that they're coordinating with each other in terms of when they're going into the streets. And that actually helps us keep a tab on what's going on everywhere. So, we're still working some of the kinks out, as far as that system's concerned, but I'm hopeful that in the next few months, that'll make a big difference in our ability to serve the public. Also, very recently, we rolled out an online web interface for our street closure permit system, which allows us to get information that's input by the permit applicant. Saves us a lot of time, and it also increases our productivity in managing permits. So, those kinds of things, when we get them up and running, I think it'll, it'll sort of multiply our ability to address the volume that we see, which is very significant, and it's, it's increasing exponentially, as you know.
Yes, and I always want, I also want to congratulate you on the work with LNI. Now that, I guess, Commissioner Perry, who came from streets, and now in LNI, or back to LNI, understands the working relationships is necessary, and instead of pointing fingers at each other, we're there to say, whoever's job it is, one of us will get it done and work together to do that. And it's not, it's not an easy job, but I got to say that your leadership, Commissioner, and leadership of LNI, willing to work together, make the changes necessary, are important to move the city forward, so thank you for everything you've done so far. Really appreciate it.
We're thankful to Commissioner Perry. We also want to ensure that, regardless of what the service is, if it's something that we can do as a group or combined effort, we're willing to do so.
Well, keep up the great work, and it's been fun working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
I want to congratulate the Streets Department on a couple of broader issues, and then talk about one specifically. The Streets Department continues to be, and it started a few years ago, but you've continued it, and it is being more community-oriented. Going out, talking to people, meetings in the evening, being available, whether it be yourself, deputies, somebody at the level that is the right level to talk, listen, get back. I find when I'm talking to members of your staff, they know a lot more about what I'm talking about than I anticipated, which is a good thing. It's usually a learning curve to explain things, and they just, there's a culture that has developed that, I'm glad you are continuing, where the Streets Department and neighborhoods are becoming partners in all this. So, that's, that's one piece of good news, and your deputies, your top-level managers, I mean, they all get it, I think.
Thank you.
And I know that's what the mayor's trying to do, and I think he's achieving it in the Streets Department. I just wanted to say that to you. Also, on a very positive note, the, I thought the blizzard, more than anything else, showed our capacity to really dig in, work our butts off, and as a city, as a city force. And you and I have had this conversation, I've had it with Mayor Kenny. I think the amount of money we spent on the private sector, which I think at a certain point gets weaker and weaker in its production, we could much better handle by increasing our capacity, particularly with equipment. I think we've got the manpower. I think it's an equipment issue, and I was just wondering if there's anything in this budget that lends itself to that. Is there any smaller equipment, better equipment, newer equipment, equipment that we've found to be useful, whether we borrowed it from the Parking Authority or somebody else, that we would have in our inventory, and they would be helping us, but we would have more capacity just within our own?
Currently, we still do not have any equipment that's simply dedicated to snow fighting. Unfortunately, our paving equipment and our compactors are so far behind, that the monies that we are getting now are trying to replenish the core services, is the word I should use. The core service, the equipment that we need for our core services, we're trying to replace that first. We have talked about other ways, and have talked to the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure about snow fighting equipment that dedicated to snow fighting. Again, there may be additional resources needed with that, because when we look at how we fight snow, almost all available staffing is fighting snow right now. So, even if we had sixty pieces of equipment outside of what we have, you may not have the people to operate it at this point. So, as of right now, we have not had the investment to fight snow with certain equipment on its own, but we are investing in our equipment that does serve multi-purposes, where it is providing our core services, but we still are able to use it for snow fighting.
Okay, I think I understand you. Let me just before, because you mentioned personnel, and you don't want to spike personnel for a short period of time. It's one thing to have equipment sitting there, it's another thing to have a person not working eleven months a year, because they're there for snow removal. But other cities have its all-hands-on-deck policy, Parks and Rec, public property, whomever it is, that they can get out on the street, they man that equipment if they have it. I don't know if we've looked at that. The other area is intergovernmental contracts or MOUs between, say, redevelopment authority, parking authority, even housing authority, where they've got manpower. They're, you know, they get done their snow removal, it's, you know, around the complexes, sidewalks and things, and we can put them out on the street. I don't know if you've looked at any of that coordination, even if there's a payment that transfers between streets and one of, or city, you know, city and one of the agencies. It just seems like an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, we are working with other departments, and that's not an issue. I mean, we've got a good relationship with the Water Department, for example, Parks and Recs, and so we do work with them. Recruiting staff that they have in order to work with us in our snow operation. We had a really good experience with PPA this winter, and so we're looking to explore ways to continue to work together with them. I just would want to say also, though, you know, there's plenty of work during the eleven months of the year, if we have an opportunity to take on more of our core services, that will have a benefit in snow fighting as well. Finally, last thing I would want to say is that we are, we're going through, and we're getting ready to reissue the contract that we work with the private sector on, and we are looking very, very closely at ways to improve the accountability and improve the productivity of the private contractors that we work with, to make sure we're getting the most out of them as well.
I think the more we can shift some of that five million dollars that the mayor announced after the blizzard, over to our own ongoing efforts that are then built in as part of our institutional capacity, would really be great. But thank you, I'm glad you're doing that.
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bass.
Thank you again. And I just had a question. I don't know if you actually have the answer to this question, but it's along the lines of equipment, as Councilman O'Neil was just discussing about, the technology that's available, and, you know, where we are on that spectrum, which is pretty far back, that could make it easier, save the city money, you know, adjust or address workers' compensation issues, and people being out because they've injured themselves. And I'm just wondering, as I understand it, in different places, there is a technology where, you know, sanitation technicians don't have to lift, you know, like a trash can or, you know, a container, that it can actually be picked up. And that would be helpful, in the sense that you wouldn't have to worry about, again, injury. So, I don't know if that's something that is, you know, ever in the sights of the Streets Department.
I've actually explored this a number of times.
Okay.
There are about five factors that come into that. When you're looking at the mechanical service, they add between seven and eighteen seconds to each lift. The average sanitation crew picks up about two houses in eleven seconds. These particular pieces of equipment service, about eight hundred households per day, but that's only one can, one household. You pick the can up, put it down, move to the next household, pick it up, pull it down, move to the next household. That's not including the sofas, the mattresses, the box springs that you get to put out, and it, we allow up to eight bags and four cans. And so, if you just look at the timeframe that it would take...
How many seconds did you say it adds?
It takes us to service two households on average, with all two labors, approximately eleven seconds.
Eleven seconds, but if, but with this new type of equipment, how much longer, how many seconds does it add?
It's going to add anywhere between seven and eighteen seconds, but depending on the proximity...
Seven to eighteen?
Exactly. Seven to eighteen seconds, depending on the proximity of the trash receptacle. And one issue is, we will have to change our regs if what we accept at the curb, which could lead to illegal dumping, because if you're only picking up that one can, that's all you're allowed to put out in these municipalities.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilwoman, just on a comparison, we did do a study with recycling a couple of years ago, and it, on average, it took a toter system with a lifting device twenty-three seconds from curb to truck, where it takes us eleven seconds with a three-man crew. Commissioners are right, some of the challenges that we face with toter-sized system that can be used in some of our suburban partner areas, have to do with spacing requirements. So, that system wouldn't work in areas, tightening areas like South Philadelphia, North Philadelphia, and West Philadelphia, but it may work in other parts of wide-open spaces, because parking restrictions, open lanes, and so forth. Those are the... Those are the challenges that we face in a city like Philadelphia.
When we did our study, did we look at the, the extra time, maybe the additional manpower versus the cost of injury? Was the, did it, you know, did we look at how many people we have injured out at any given time? How that affects collections as well? I'm assuming that was a part of whatever analysis was done.
I'll have to reach back with our safety office and take a look at it.
Okay.
But again, when we looked at it, just as much as it looks conducive, some of our driveways have low-hanging wires, which I think, I forget, is 12 feet or 14 feet. These lifts, when we actually have photos, I'll show them to you, where we went through the driveways, these actual lifts were higher and actually getting tangled on some wires. Again, the parking restrictions. And again, they say they improved technology where it doesn't take as long, it took a few years ago.
Sure.
We brought them back out, looked at it again, but it was still increasing our loading time, where we would probably have to have 35 to 40% more trucks on the street just to service what we're doing now with the two-man crews.
So we could hire more people? That'd be...
No. You only get one person on that truck, so actually, you're going to be almost even, just more trucks on the street.
Oh, okay, okay. So you only need one person?
One laborer, but you have...
And plus one driver.
40% more trucks on the street.
Okay.
So you're really not seeing much of a savings, but you're paying upfront with those vehicles.
Okay. How long, how, how old is this study that was done?
Uh, we did this, Keith, what is it?
Recently or...
A year and a half ago, Keith.
So fairly recently.
Less than two years ago.
Okay. And one last question, going back to the, the speed bumps. So I have some, a few blocks in my district that have, that need to be resurfaced, and speed bumps were placed in position, but the street is just all kinds of crazy. I mean, it just really needs to be resurfaced. And so I can't understand, you know, is there some sort of criteria, was there some thought process that went into saying, okay, well, here on, and I'll give you an example, here on East Gravers Lane in Chestnut Hill, the unit block of East Gravers Lane, there are potholes for days, but at the same time, there are speed bumps. And so it would seem as if we wouldn't need speed bumps because the potholes are a natural speed bump. They have become a natural sort of speed bump. And so before we put down speed bumps, is there a criteria that we look at and say, this street is not in condition to receive, because, you know, it's a lot of money. And at some point, you're going to have to repave that street, I hope sooner rather than later. I use that street as an example for a reason. But I'm hoping that at some point soon, you'll repave it, but then the money that went into providing speed bumps for that neighborhood, it was a waste.
Well, I, I, you should know that it is possible to pave between the speed cushions.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we don't have to destroy the speed cushion in order to complete the paving. There will be a seam that's formed, but, you know, that's something we can manage. I think the East Gravers Lane, there was a Water Department job there, so there might have been some, some coordination that we could have undertaken that could have made the situation better, but it was sort of out of our control when Water had to go in and do some work there. We do try and take that into account, but that is something that we are keeping our eye on, and ideally, we are trying to put in the cushion after the paving has taken place. But it is a balance, because, you know, there is a desire usually in these neighborhoods to have that stuff in there right away.
Yes.
So we want there to be a few years that go by before we're back paving, but we do have some opportunity to do the paving after the cushions are in place.
Okay. Well, if we could take a look at East Gravers Lane?
Yeah, we'll be...
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. And I was asked to remind the committee that we are well behind. We still have two more departments to come. Councilman Squiller.
Ask question. And just on the speed bumps, because every district gets inundated with requests, especially for small streets, with the cushions or pillows or whatever it may be. But does it also have a problem when we're plowing these streets, when you have these cushions or bumps involved?
Our, our specification for the design of the speed cushion is such that it does not create a problem for plowing.
Even, even if there's little sections where, like, the wheels go through, when you go to plow it, wouldn't that leave that part?
Well, I mean, if, if, if we're looking at the, the one narrow gap being filled with some snow or maybe a pack, you should be able to drive a vehicle through there. You would have to aim for the cushion in that case and not the gap.
Right.
But, you know, in the course of salting and natural melting.
And who would decide if, if we get requests from some of these streets to put a cushion in? Is that something that Streets Department would say, no, that's not in our purview? Or how does that work?
Well, when the request comes in, what we try and do is to do an investigation just to be sure that the cushion is the right solution, because there's other things that we can do often to address the problem. And so if we determine that that's the best solution, then we'll try and put a project together and work with...
Because my fear is, once you have one of these on one street...
That's right.
Everybody's going to ask for it on their street.
That's right. So, so one of the things that we, we look at is whether or not we're pushing traffic on the parallel streets, or whether there's going to be a significant impact on the block upstream or downstream from where the cushion is being put in. And as we go back and look at the policy that we have in place, one of the things that we're considering is how to notify these other neighborhoods or these other blocks that there's potentially an impact that could take place on that block.
We saw that sort of happen with permit parking. One street, we get it, and then people will go parking lots, and they'll just constantly go and, you know, all over. So I have a feeling that once this starts, if it proliferates, I don't know what the policy will be or how they regulate it, but we'll be inundated with requests.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that kind of issue is something we do take into account when we're doing our investigation. We've got a good year under our belt with, with the most recent, you know, the most recent speed cushion program, traffic calming program. And what we found was, like you say, there initially was a big, a large amount of interest in it, but I think people are starting to weigh the pros and cons, and so this year, we haven't had a ton of requests come in for new speed cushions. And so I think it's going to meet some sort of equilibrium. Some people will want them on a block, and some people will know they've driven on them in other neighborhoods and maybe say, this is something we should think about a little bit more carefully.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we'll be brief. I want to thank you for your response regarding the, the traffic calming, because you're absolutely right. What happens is that a resident in one section of the City of Philadelphia who is on a block where, you know, traffic is zooming, you all have come out, just like you make a determination whether or not we should have a stop sign and/or a traffic light after you've conducted your engineering study. I would, would think that you would come out when we make the request for the cushion and conduct a similar study to see if it was appropriate. But when people travel throughout our City of Philadelphia and they go and, and see something in another region, and they come back to think it will make our streets safer or calm traffic on our street, you can't fault a resident from trying to find a way to make their street safe. So I want to thank you for your response to that question. My final question is in regards to page two of your testimony, where you talk about the department embarking on a long-term plan to significantly increase paving over the next several years. And with that being said, I won't ask you to answer it now, but, but obviously, you know, you all will have a plan for paving, and each district council person, obviously, this is an issue of major importance to, to each of them, because they get the requests and the calls, why not my street? This street is paved. So if you could find a way to work directly with the district council people to make sure that when you sort of, you know, work to develop your plan, that we know, and then we can communicate, you know, what, what we perceive for, you know, happening in, in the future in our respective neighborhoods throughout our districts.
We do try and work with council president and council when putting our paving plan together for each upcoming year. So we definitely want to keep that relationship going, where you guys are aware of what your constituents need and where, where, what the city needs, so we can come together to work on a common cause and deliver the service where it's most needed.
Yes, and finally, Councilman O'Neil, my, my thinking in that while I thanked you for the, what you did during, during our snowstorm, I did not say a hearty thanks to all of your staff who have been attending town hall meetings since I've been an elected[1753.30]